We actually had a question on Main Street outside. I'll be doing it in the evening. I'm just hoping that it will hold here. He's not going to be. I should know. I should know. I have it online.
We have a transcript of the presentation. We have a copy of the presentation. If you have a transcript of this, we will have it out on our website. So if you analyze it, certainly.
Okay, because I didn't put this in the chat. I would have it in front of you.
Hi, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Good.
Thank you.
Are you?
I'm good. How are you? Nice to meet you. Do you want apple?
Yeah, we work together. At the same time, he's strong with him.
Yeah, you tend to be a little.
Yes.
Andstrum, milk or andstrum?
We can have a bench person at the time, Mark. Hi, how are you? I'm Stefan. I didn't recognize you.
I changed so often. I guess.
Let me know how we're seeing here.
That's okay.
I'll make the obvious thing after.
I know you guys have an access right there.
Sure, for advancing, you just use the arrows on this one?
Yeah, or you can use the mouse, too. Yeah, the mouse is ready. I strongly suggest the arrows.
Oh, you?
Yeah, the mouse has a plan. I'm just being polite. You want to risk it?
I now feel, I now feel worried very much.
Yeah, do whatever you need to.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I'm Stefan. I saw you were binding the other day. You had the running cameras on and it was snowy and slushy. Was there a girl? You were chasing her? Yes.
I'm not doing that.
Serious story.
Ham. That's pretty girly, eh? So, I would like to call this meeting to order. Firstly, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day. So, I have the agenda in front of us. Would anybody, does anybody have any additions to the agenda? Administration? Excellent. So, I'll call the question all in favor, carried unanimously. And we have a delegation today, which is Stephen, Steph, is it?
Stefan.
I just know you as Steph.
Yeah, you can call me that, too.
Stefan Legault. And he will be presenting to us the Y2Y polling results. Take it away, sir.
Thanks very much, Administration Council. Pleasure to be here and to come back before you to present an update on the work that Yellowstone to Yukon is doing with the community to advance the notion of a conservation fund here in town. As you may recall, the last time I came before you, we were in the process of setting up a steering committee of some folks here in town that includes Mayor Boromann. And the notion was to start exploring the idea of how, as a community, we might raise money to work together in order to create opportunities to advance some of our mutual conservation goals. One of the things we talked about was that we would be putting a poll in the field, so I'm pleased to come today and present those results. And while the purpose of the polling, which was done by Edmonton-based ENRG, is to educate our thinking on a conservation fund here in town, I think the information is, in general, really useful for those of us who live here in the Valley. So, the background and rationale, some of you may recall that the conservation fund notion has been a topic of conversation for a couple of years. Dave Hillary appeared before council a couple of years ago to talk about the Kootenay Conservation Fund. We now have a committee of a few citizens. Bart Robinson is on that. Mayor Boromann sits on that. We have a number of other citizens at large to sort of develop a framework for this conversation. And then we've done this polling, which was done at the end of 2016, essentially to develop a spectrum of our understanding of interest in wildlife in general, about the development of a conservation fund, and the possibility of using one of the tools that the town has at its disposal, which is a levy, in order to raise those dollars. The objectives of the poll were to understand the wilderness preservation and protection values held by residents of Canmore, and to determine the level of support or opposition to establishing a conservation fund. Methodology, we surveyed 400 residents over a couple of weeks. 65% of the residents were called on landlines, 35% by cellphone. 400 residents gives us a margin of error at 4.8%, 19 times out of 20. And then the results were weighted for gender and age. So, as they polled the demographics, they weeded out some on the either end of the spectrum in order to make sure that it was representative of what actually exists here in town. And Y2Y has resources to do a follow-up poll if we feel that it's necessary in order to help us better understand the issues. So, some of this will look a little bit small, but hopefully you will have the copy for yourself. What is unique about Canmore? We wanted to get a sense of how people felt about their place in Canmore. None of these were surprise or trick questions. It was really just getting a sense of how people felt, and clearly you see that there's strong support for most of the statements made. What was interesting to me was how strongly people felt measures should be taken to reduce wildlife being killed on the highway. And this is an issue that I've been discussing, and Yellowstone to Yukon has been discussing with the province extensively over the last year. We've made an official request to the government to allocate dollars for budget in 2017, 2018, to try and work on this issue here in the Bow Valley. You can see that the other top ones, the presence of wildlife in and around Canmore is important, recreational opportunities near Canmore are important, and I feel strongly about the connection with nature because of living in Canmore. I think this, none of this is a surprise to any of us, and really reinforces what we already know to be true about our community. We were talking about this earlier. Have you heard of wildlife corridors? And we were discussing whether or not this is really the best language to use, but in fact, it turns out that the vast majority of people in Canmore have heard of wildlife corridors. And as you dig into the polling, most people understand what it actually means, the notion that wildlife need to migrate between areas in order to find food and mates, and that in order to ensure long-term genetic survival, that they need to pass those genes on to different populations. How important is it that measures be taken to protect wildlife movement corridors? I've been doing polling for 25 years as a conservationist through various campaigns, including federal and international campaigns. I've never had a poll come back with this answer. 98% of respondents to this poll felt that it was somewhat important or very important that we take measures to protect wildlife movement corridors in the Bow Valley. So, in essence, what this is saying is you'd be very hard-pressed to find a soul in town that doesn't feel that this is important. Now, of course, as a government, as a council, we're always having to ask the hard question, okay, well, that's fine. You feel strongly about that. How does that weigh in trade-offs that we have to make in order to survive as a community? But I think that this is good baseline understanding for us as a community. Possible uses of a conservation fund. So, in developing our poll, we wanted to give people a sense of if we were to collect a pot of money somewhere in the half-million to million-dollar range, what would you want it used for? And you may recall that when we met previously, council provided some feedback on this, and Mississauga was extremely helpful in working with Mayor Boromann to provide us with additional direction on this as to what are some of the things that a fund could be used for. Initially, you might recall that the purpose was set aside as the purchase of either easements or fee simple property rights to buy conservation value lands in the Bow Valley. That was what our original thinking was two or three years ago, and that's what the Kootenay Conservation Fund principally does. But here in Canmore, we decided to open up the spectrum and have a conversation with the community about what it was that they felt was important. And thanks to the guidance of council and administration, I think we've come up with some very interesting ideas. Educating people about conservation of lands and wildlife corridors in the Valley became, came out on top. The next one is maintaining infrastructure that is designed to protect wildlife movement corridors. This comes directly from council's feedback, and this question is a direct result of our conversation the last time around. Advocating for land stewardship and wildlife. And then finally, down sort of tied for three and four there is the purchasing of parcels of land critical for wildlife movement. It should be noted that that item, even in our wildest dreams, we don't think a levy or a fund would ever provide us with the resources needed to actually go out and make an offer on a piece of land. At a million dollars a year, even if in our wildest imagination, it's pretty tough to find a piece of land that we could buy for that. So, the idea there would be to work with partners, to leverage federal or provincial dollars in the event that we did decide to go down that route. So, I just want to reiterate, because the things were fairly small in that last one, if a conservation fund is established in Canmore, the highest part of uses would be education about conservation and maintaining infrastructure, protect wildlife. Third-in-priority is purchasing of parcel lands for conservation. Now, I'm going to put this question up, even though it breaks all my rules about PowerPoint presentations, because there's no pretty picture on it. One way Canmore can, so this is a question we asked specifically about a levy, is one way Canmore can fund conservation would be to create a municipal property tax levy. In 2016, an average annual levy of $58 per household was used to support the development of affordable housing. So, that's to give people the sense that, yes, we are actually already doing this here in town. How would you feel about contributing in this way to fund, to help protect functional wildlife corridors and address other conservation priorities? How would you feel about contributing to this fund, blah, blah, blah? Sorry, I think I reiterated that. So, this is the response that we got. 78% were either somewhat supportive or strongly supportive of the creation of a levy in town. And 20% opposed, 2% didn't know. The steering committee, including Mayor Boromann, believed going into this exercise that these numbers would be flipped. We thought that we would get about 20% support, that we'd have to spend the next six months or a year working really hard in town to educate people about the potential value of this, and then we would do another poll to see if we'd move the dial a few percentage points. What we got back surprised us. Now, it shouldn't have been a surprise, knowing what we know about Canmore, knowing what we know about people's connection with wildlife, but whenever we talk about asking people for money, we always feel a little bit nervous. And yet, here, 78% of respondents came back saying either that they somewhat support or strongly support. So, there were a few opposed, 20%. In the survey, that was about 80 people. And the results of that show that about 30% of those people, they don't think that a conservation fund is necessary. 64% said that they support a conservation fund, but they don't support a levy, and they think it should be funded some other way. Interestingly, when asked how they thought it should be funded, the number-one response was by government, which doesn't quite square with this. I think they think provincial or federal government. And then a very small percentage of those just said, we don't, we don't know, but we just don't want one. In terms of the amount for a conservation levy, we gave people the opportunity to rank what they wanted to see, and surprisingly, there was more support for a higher levy than a smaller levy. So, I'm not sure how to really explain that, except that I think people understand the value of wildlife, that they're willing to put their money where their mouth is in this town, and that they expect to be able to invest in these things. For each one of these questions in the polling data that I've supplied you, the broader package, there's some demographical breakdowns, which I think are really interesting. The highest earners in town often felt that there had less support for a high levy. There was still support for a levy, but less support for a high levy, whereas lower-income earners were in support of a higher levy. So, that was a little bit inverse there. A little bit of demographic segments, and there's quite a bit more information in the package on this. The way the polling company broke this down was that 51% of Canmore residents, they would consider strong conservation supporters. That would index towards female, lower, middle incomes. 90% agreement with all of the environmental statements made. Highest support for a high levy, and strong agreement that we have to do more to allow free movement of wildlife in the Bow Valley. The next segment down 45%. So, again, we're still talking about the vast majority of people that live in Canmore. They would index high and middle income, 55 to 64, even split in gender. Moderate support for the 80 to 100% levy. Highest index on supporting a conservation fund of less than $80. Middle-of-the-road on environmental statements, so again, 40 to 60%. So, this is sort of your middle, middle-range demographic. And moderate agreement that we have to do more to allow free movement. 4% of Canmore doesn't really seem to care too, too much about this issue. Indexes towards older males and highest-income category. There's no support for the levy amongst these 4%. And 63% oppose a conservation fund, and there's no agreement that we have to do more to allow the free movement. Again, that's 4% of our population. So, it would be pretty tough to actually go out and find those people. I'm sure we could, but in general, what we're looking at right now is a community that's overwhelmingly in support of the protection of wildlife and conservation and wildlife movement corridors, and believes that one tool that we have as a community is the creation of a levy to help support that. So, what's next? While we're having further conversations, there'll be another steering committee meeting coming up next month. We're going to discuss the polling and what direction to go in. Those meetings are open for participation. People just need to contact me if they'd like to be involved with that. I've had conversations with a couple of key members of BODA, and we'll be getting letters of support from those individuals in the next few weeks to support a conservation fund and the development of a levy. I've been invited to speak to BODA to talk with them about this and get their support for it. We're going to start a series of community conversations next. So, this is just an idea right now. This is just one possible way that the community can come together. So, let's get together and have conversations. I think I said conservations. Yeah, I do that all the time, don't I? I could see Sean smiling. I knew I must have done, made a spell in here. Public awareness campaigns next. So, over the course of the next few months, we'll start using the advice that we get from the community and start working with our partners here in town. So, we'll look for partners amongst the community to start bringing this idea out to the broader public and get feedback and see if we can build some momentum. And then, we'd like to prepare for a possible fall plebiscite on this issue. So, in conjunction with the municipal election, we'd like to consider the possibility that this would be a ballot question. Would you like to have a levy that supports a conservation fund in town? So, that's my time. Your worship, if council or administration has any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Would anybody have any questions? Okay. Counselor Kressert.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Legault. Obviously, this is timely information, as you've just described, for potential next steps. There's also currently activity with regards to designating corridors in our valley. I was wondering if this has been shared with the provincial government?
You're the first to see the detailed data, and I'll be sharing this with folks at Alberta Environment and Parks now that I've had the opportunity to present to you. Given their relationship with the town, we felt it was important that council and administration see it first.
Great, thank you. And I really appreciate that there's going to be some more community conservation conversations.
Yes, you can imagine, being a conservationist, I accidentally write that word many, many times.
Absolutely, no, it's great. I think it worked well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Sanford.
Thank you, your worship. You had mentioned that there was a steering committee.
Yeah.
And is that a subcommittee of Y2Y?
We host them, but they're unaffiliated. So, Paul and Andrea Lassard sit on it, Bart Robinson, the mayor, a couple of members of my team. Really, what we do is try to steer the process, and we have a timeline for how we move this order. So, that group gets together about once every six weeks to try and make sure that we're still moving in the right direction, analyze data, take a pulse of the community.
And so, if there was a levy created, how would you see that being managed?
Well, I think that that would be a conversation to have with council, administration, and the community. There'd probably be some constraints in terms of dollars raised through a levy, how that is managed. The town would probably, my understanding would be, the town would have fiduciary oversight, but it could be that we would create a broader team or committee within the town to work on the development of projects that would be applicable to it.
And so, you're saying it would be managed within the town, or with Y2Y?
I think that would be part of the conversation.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that would be subject, obviously, to whatever legal constraints are the town has in terms of how monies like that are managed when they're raised through the town, and then obviously, a conversation with the taxpayers that would be supporting it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Comfort.
Counselor Comfort, thanks. Thanks for your presentation.
It's my pleasure.
I just was curious, you had said that the levy would never provide enough cash, I guess, to use for purchase of land. Would you still be interested in creating a fund or trust for the purchase of land in the waters of Canmore?
This fund could be used to kickstart that. So, for example, if, let's say, optimistically, we were able to create a levy that brought in 3/4 of a million dollars a year. You know, could we leverage other private donations for land, for conservation easements? Absolutely. Could we work with the provincial and federal governments, both of whom have pots of money of various sizes and locations, to leverage those funds? Absolutely. I think my point is that nobody's under the impression that we could, with this fund, go out and start buying pieces of land. That's not feasible unless we use it to leverage other dollars. And what we've heard from the community so far, and what I'm hearing anecdotally from those that I'm talking to, is that that is of a lower priority to people in Canmore than is the education about and maintenance of existing wildlife corridors and the infrastructure required to support them. So, for example, in my conversations with members, a couple of key members of BODA, you know, there was strong support for working together with a fund like this to try and educate people about where are wildlife quarters? Why are they important? And as a way of trying to ameliorate some of the tension that exists between, you know, the development of properties in town, the presence of strong recreational interests in town, and the need to maintain and manage an international wildlife corridor.
Great answer. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Counselor Sealy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor McKellum. And thank you for your presentation.
And I'm not surprised by the numbers. Canmore's been a community for quite some time that's supported this type of work, and
we've heard it loud and clear. And what I found really interesting was the amount, $80 to $100. I find that's also encouraging and supports that there's strong support. And that would be an annual, an annual fee?
That would be my understanding, yeah, that would be to the tax rule.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. So, thank you for your presentation. I had an opportunity to see it before, so it's great, and it's very telling. The one thing I would add is, though, and you and I had a discussion about this before, was that within the questions, the average home, the price of a home was the 50 to 80, and, sorry, $50 to $80 on an average home, and actually, that number would have been closer to 5210 in 2016. But that's neither here nor there. Why have you, has your group thought more about a levy based on the mill rate versus a per parcel levy, which is what I understand the model is in the Kootenays? Which is more equitable?
We're open to the conversation around the mechanism. Whatever makes the most sense for the demographic in Canmore, what council and administration think is the most both effective and fair way of creating a fund is something that we're open to. We're not fixated on, nor are we attached to a position specific to, you know, the proportion of, or whether it's mill rate or whatnot. We're really open to that conversation, and I think we're starting to engage in that conversation.
So, when you've modeled out what your fund would look like, it's been on mill rate thus far?
The way the modeling would have worked is, it's been very scientific. Mayor Boromann did it on a piece of paper, and based on current levies that are in place here in town with regards to senior housing and affordable housing. That's the rock hammer that we've come with. And he's running through administration to make sure that he's, you know, not too terribly far off.
Cool. Pardon? Oh, your microphone's not on, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm loud.
It's my first rodeo this year. Yes, they're like wah, wah, wah.
I'm sure everybody's gripped right now.
And I guess a question for administration. What would the process be? Is there a process within the MGA to have a plebiscite question put on the ballot? Could you? Oh, that's my turn. Yay.
So, council can put a question on the ballot and determine to be holden to it. I don't have the specific section of the MGA that I can cite, but I believe if it's put on by resolution of council, and it would then behold the council to take action on it. So, you couldn't just, we'll have to confirm that.
So, it's binding whether or not, or not? We have to find out if it's a binding pleb.
Yeah, Ms. Height's going to look it up.
Yeah, I was just curious as to whether the process was the same that, I'm guessing that Y2Y would come to us and say, we would like to have this question put on the ballot, would be presented, and council would decide, and?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Legault, have you had an opportunity to speak to any of our neighboring communities about this initiative?
You and I mentioned, we talked about that before Christmas, Deputy Mayor. Not yet.
Okay.
There are a variety of challenging issues before the Valley right now that relate to the MD of Big Horn with regards to dead man's past that are in the process of being resolved, hopefully. And so, I have not reached out to Reeve Cooper on this issue. I'm frankly waiting for the dust to blow over on that issue. And I have not spoken with Mayor Swarrenson about this. I think that there would be great value in other communities, neighboring communities doing this. I also think there's great value in Canmore showing leadership and continuing to frankly lead the way when it comes to the municipal relationship with wildlife.
Okay. Any additional questions? Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks very much, counsel.
Appreciate it.
So, minutes of the January 17th, can you read a warning? Any secrets in here? So, all questions to improve those minutes on paper, carried unanimously. Next up, we have presentations and stuff.
With regards to the community grant policy revisions. And I would point out to council that this is an actual committee of the whole item, so we have the opportunity, as committee of the whole, to recommend changes and have those changes made by vote, and then those changes are presented to council when it comes back to council. All right. Hello, Ms. Brown, how are you?
Good, good. How are you?
Not bad, huh?
It's good to hear. Sorry, I'm just setting up. Unfortunately, I have no pictures, so it's not quite as nice as last one.
The blue letters are still pretty.
So, good afternoon, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Today, I'm here to share with you some proposed community grant revisions and to seek your input and feedback on these revisions. There'll be time for questions at the end, but please feel free to ask throughout if I can clarify any details. So, why are we proposing these changes? Approved a motion to support four community events. In recognition that additional sport and culture events are being planned in 2017 and beyond, council approved $50,000 from the Economic Development Reserve in both 2017 and 2018 budgets, and tasked administration with developing a process for allocating these funds. As such, instead of creating a new process, there is an opportunity to amend the already existing community grant policy to include a process for special event funding. In addition, the current 2012 community grant policy is due for review this year in 2017. The community grant program provides the town with an opportunity to invest in promising community projects that align with our town's vision and goals. Last year...
changes made by vote and then those changes are presented to council when it comes back to council. All right. Hello, Ms. Brown, how are you?
Good, good, how are you?
Not bad, huh?
It's good to hear. Unfortunately, I have no pictures, so it's not quite as nice as last one.
The blue letters are still pretty.
So, good afternoon Deputy Mayor, members of council. Today I'm here to share with you some proposed community grant revisions and to seek your input and feedback on these revisions. There'll be time for questions at the end, but please feel free to ask throughout if I can clarify any details. So why are we proposing these changes? Approved a motion to support four community events. In recognition that additional sport and culture events are being planned in 2017 and beyond, council approved fifty thousand dollars from the Economic Development Reserve in, in both 2017 and 2018 budgets and tasked administration with developing a process for allocating these funds. As such, instead of creating a new process, there is an opportunity to amend the already existing community grant policy to include a process for special event funding. In addition, the current 2012 community grant policy is due for review this year in 2017. The community grant program provides the town with an opportunity to invest in promising community projects that align with our town's vision and goals. Last year through the community grant program, the town provided project funding to fourteen community organizations. Through this program, we supported a local music association with welcoming new Canadians into their program. We supported the creation of a knowledge base that will help businesses with their climate adaptation plan. We supported a local theater program with maintaining their costumes. We supported cancer prevention and awareness community resources and there is so much more, which I will look forward to sharing with you once I have all the final reports in. But today I'm here to discuss with you our proposal for revisions to our current successful community grant program. The revisions I will discuss with you today are in relation to three community grant documents. The revised community grant policy, the new community grant procedure, and the new community grant selection committee bylaw. As part of these documents, there are four main proposed changes that I would like to seek your feedback on. The first change is as part of the community grant program to create three distinct funding streams that applicants can apply to. The second is to create a community grant selection committee. The third is to shift grant management responsibility and the fourth is to increase the municipal granting proportion. The first proposed revision is to move from one granting stream to three. The current community grant policy has one community grant stream that provides one-time project-based funding to Canmore-based nonprofits and charities. Funding is for innovative projects in sport, recreation, park, art, social service, community safety, and to the environment. We propose a change from one funding stream to three. Through these three streams, the community grant program will provide one-time project funding to not-for-profit societies and community organizations. The first stream, the community initiative grant, provides one-time project funding of up to five thousand dollars for initiatives in sport, recreation, park, art, social service, and to the environment. And for clarity, we separated out community safety. We included a maximum application amount in each proposed stream. During the 2016 application process, one of the most frequent questions we received was in relation to how much an organization can apply for. It became clear that some funding parameters might better support community organizations with their application process. The deadline for this stream will be noon the last business day of April, which is consistent with 2016. The second stream we are proposing is a special event granting stream for the initiatives that promote economic development in Canmore and that create a vibrant and engaged community. Like the community grant, the funding will be one-time project funding for not-for-profit societies and community organizations. Grants will be supported from the Economic Development Reserve and fifty thousand dollars from the reserve was put in the budget for 2017 and 2018 for special events. As part of this stream, we're proposing a maximum funding amount of ten thousand dollars per project. This maximum will be especially useful for this stream, which includes a second application deadline. And we want to ensure that applicants who apply in the second application round will have equal access to funding. The deadlines for this stream are noon, last business day of April, and noon, last business day of September. The third stream we're proposing is a community safety grant stream. In 2016, the community grant policy was amended to include community safety. The idea of enlisting community to keep Canmore safe is still valid, but in 2016, when the initiative was under the umbrella of the current community grant program, the lines of what constitutes community safety were blurred with community development. This year, we're proposing a third distinct stream to support initiatives that make Canmore a safe place to live and play. This can include purchasing safety equipment, launching a safety campaign, or completing a safety modification. For example, maybe a nonprofit might want to use these dollars to make their program more accessible for community members. Grants will be supported through the photo radar reserve and ten thousand dollars is allocated in 2017 from this reserve. With this stream, the maximum funding amount is five thousand dollars. But as a side note, if the committee assesses all applications and feels that a certain applicant needs more than the maximum amount in order to meet their project outcomes, the committee can bring that application to council to request that the applicant receive a larger proportion of that specific stream. We can assess this on a case-by-case basis. All right. So the next proposed revision is the creation of a community grant selection committee. Current policy states that council may appoint a community to review grant applications and make recommendation for council approval. In the proposed new policy, council will appoint a community grant selection committee. Administration will request that council approve the committee through a proposed new bylaw. Council will appoint members of the community grant selection committee. As per the policy and the bylaw, the committee will be comprised of a representative from council, myself, the manager of community social development, and I'll chair the committee, representatives from arts and events or event permitting, and two public members who are residents of Canmore. The purpose of this selection committee will be to determine the proportion of the council-approved budget that will be awarded to eligible applicants based on council's goals and visions. The third proposed change is a shift in grant management responsibility. So to explain the proposed changes, I'll walk through each party's responsibility. So the applicant's responsibility. Currently applicants are responsible for demonstrating eligibility, reporting outcomes, and providing full financial accountability. We are not proposing any changes to the applicant's responsibility. The revised policy just includes some wording changes to simplify and clarify. Administration's responsibility. Currently administration is responsible for the overall management of the grant, application process, and proposing award recommendations to council. We're proposing that administration will be responsible for overseeing the community grant selection committee, reporting awarded projects to council, and the evaluation, evaluation matrix used to allocate awards. With this evaluation matrix, council and applicants, both successful and unsuccessful, will be able to see where they are ranked in relation to other applicants. And administration will be responsible for reporting final project outcomes to council and reporting unused project funds to council. Committee responsibility. At present, council may appoint a committee to review grant applications and make recommendations. We are proposing that community grant selection committee is created and is responsible for ranking all community grant applications in accordance to the policy criteria and determining the proportion of council-approved budget that will be awarded to each successful applicant. And council's responsibility. At present, the administration and, and an advisory committee reviews applicants and recommends award allocations to council. We are proposing a shift where instead council will advise a selection committee on the purpose and intention of the granting program and the selection committee will award dollars based on council's traction. As such, we're proposing the council is responsible for establishing a budget for community grants, approving community grant policy, approving the community grant selection committee bylaw, appointing members to the community grant selection committee, and allocating unused project funds. The last proposed revision that we would like your feedback on is an increased municipal granting proportion. So the current policy indicates the Town of Canmore Community Grant Program is intended to provide up to twenty-five percent of total expenses of project-based initiatives. We heard that from some of our nonprofits, we heard that some of our nonprofits struggled with creating new projects where they have to raise seventy-five percent of the expenses. It's also important to note that the town's funding does not cover operational capital expenses for an organization. It only covers project expenses, which means the organization itself must be self-sustainable. We are simply helping these organizations with launching their good ideas. We're proposing that we increase the municipal portion of the grant to fifty percent to further reduce barriers for nonprofits in our community and to encourage the development of new innovative community-based projects. So what are our next steps? Well, I'll incorporate your feedback and in March, administration will request that council repeal the current community policy and accept the revised policy. The council approve the selection committee bylaw and the council appoint the community selection committee representatives. In future year, the committee appointments will be done at the council organization meeting, but because of timing, this year we'll ask for it in March. So thank you for your time. Can I answer any of your questions?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any questions?
Counselor Crowser. Oh, no, hold on, give me a sec. If you're?
Thank you, Deputy Worship. Thank you, Ms. Brown, for your presentation. I'm really liking the direction this is going. Couple of questions. I noticed in the report it talks about council is responsible for approving amounts over the maximum amount identified in the policy, but that's not in the policy. Was it intended that that be in there or is it? Doesn't need to because obviously we set the budget and?
Yes, so that, I think that's more of that maximum application amount, so if you, if we were to have an applicant that their projects fit everything, but they're asking for six thousand instead of five thousand, then council can approve that.
And then the committee would be making a request for council to consider that?
That's right.
Okay. There was a couple of other questions here to the chair.
Yes.
Should we go through questions first and then if we have some proposed?
I think that's probably the best way to rule.
Okay, then a couple of, a couple of just editorial comments to make then. I noticed in the, in the community grant bylaw, the MGA, there was just a spot that municipal had to be capitalized, it's in eight point four.
Okay.
And I also noticed that committee is a defined term and so I would just ask to consider whether or not it should be capitalized throughout the document, which is the usual practice of defined terms. I think I had one more question, but I'll hand off the mic while I locate it.
Thank you. Counselor Sanford.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you for presentation, Ms. Brown. My question is around the shift of responsibility in the grant management. And, well, first of all, backing up, you've got three, you've got four proposals that are not in the bylaw currently, right? So, or in the policy. So I was getting a little bit confused about reading the policy as a whole.
Yeah.
But you've got four proposals that would be at some point inserted into the policy? Is that how you're seeing it or?
So, how the proposals work is some of them, some of them are directly relevant to the policy and some to the bylaw and some to the procedure. And, and I agree with you, I was, I found it a little bit complicated and interwoven as well. So one of the things I tried to do is say where the change is, if it's a policy change or if it's a bylaw change. But I think when, we have to kind of look at it all as a whole. So the policy can't be looked at as a standalone document, it has to be looked at with the bylaw as well as with the procedure and all of that together is our revisions.
And so for instance, under proposal one, you had in your suggestions to create three distinct funding streams and so A, the initiative grants, the community initiative grants, B, the special events grants. But then I don't see that actually in the policy, like it's broken down the way it is in your recommendation. So are you intending to insert those?
No, we had a bit of discussion about what's policy and what's procedure. So that there are three streams is part of the policy. The awarding the dollars based on the three streams is part of the procedure.
Okay. And that's where I was getting confused because I see it clearly stated in your proposals, but I don't see it clearly stated in the policy or the bylaw. So if I was reading the policy and the bylaw together without what the proposals flesh it out as, I wouldn't fully understand what the intent is.
And, and maybe I can work with Sally and Cheryl and make sure that we can clarify that to make, for the policy.
Because my question was that the special events funding would come from the Economic Development Reserve, right? And so that's what I'm reading in your proposal, but that's not what I'm reading in the?
But you're not seeing it. So it is in the policy under financial impacts, then we state where the money comes from.
Okay.
Ms.
You got me, that's?
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And just to clarify that, Counselor Sanford, so the policy wouldn't identify where the money comes from? That would happen by council at budget time. So we don't want to put, make by policy council beholden to put any amount of money in any of these streams. So if this policy is approved, Ms. Brown will work with those funding dollars as they've been allocated, but it's possible in any given year that council may choose to give more or less or no funding from different sources to any of those streams and we wouldn't want the policy to dictate what those dollar amounts are or where it comes from. That's at the discretion of council at budget time. So for circumstances that we don't know now, you might decide to give zero dollars in one year and a hundred, a hundred, you know, it could change from year to year and that would happen at budget time. Whatever is put in the budget then would follow this policy based on whatever range council gives us to work with.
Okay. That makes it, that, that helps me because if I didn't see it stated clearly in one section, it's because it's open to whatever allocation of the budget is for that particular year.
Yeah, and when we bring it back for formal approval, that's something we could just clarify in the staff report. Yeah.
Okay, and can I ask one more question?
Of course.
With any kind of surplus in any of those budgets, do, what would be the mechanism for handling the surplus?
So any surplus?
Or unallocated budget?
Yeah, any surplus or unallocated would come back to council and they can, they can reallocate at, at their discretion. So and that could include going to the general coffers or back to the reserve as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
Counselor Comfort.
Yeah, I just had a question about sort of the practicality in the next steps. And that was, you're looking to have the community grant selection committee formed in advance of the normal organizational meeting, so you can go ahead and proceed with presumably April and September granting?
That's right.
Would that come as a, something back to, to council? How does that work?
That's, that's right. I would like to come back in March and ask for, recommend who are, who representatives could be and ask for council to appoint.
Thank you. Oh, hold on. Counselor Crowser, I'm not sure how that works, sorry, Rob.
If, if Counsel Sealy has a question, please allow me to go for it.
Counselor Sealy, sorry.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Ms. Brown, I noticed that there's two, two granting application dates, April and September, and there's a note about Q1 funding for special events. Would that mean that if someone were to approach and apply in September, they could qualify to push it to the next year?
Yeah, I mean, it, I guess it would depend when their special event is, but yes, they could, the idea of having two application deadlines is so that any special event can have that flexibility of when they're ready to apply and then when they can launch the special event.
Because Q1, we've had troubles with that in the past that sometimes, you know, and I, I would think by September you'd know if a special event was happening and it falls between, before April, so, okay.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Counselor Crowser.
Thank you. Along the same lines, with regards to the event funding that's divided or has two application dates, would you see the second one being subject to availability of funds or would you be allocating only a certain amount for each application, period?
Yeah, I would see that we'd allocate only a certain amount. And again, we'd have to really look at this at a case-by-case basis. So let's say for the first one, we had ten proposals for special, special events. What we would like to do is have half of the funding dollars available for the second round and half available for the first round. But if we decide to fund three special events at the ten thousand dollar max, then that will only leave, leave two, twenty thousand for the second one. So we'll kind of play with it like that.
So there'd be some discretion utilized and it will fluctuate. So before you get to the September, you'll obviously know what you're working with. And maybe some year there isn't any left because something came along that the group thought should be funded earlier, right? Okay.
That's right.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any additional questions? Um, I don't have any questions. I have seen, uh, oh, sorry, Counselor Sanford, I apologize.
Thank you, Worship. I did have another question about the grant management, the responsibility for grant management. So, you're proposing that, um, under proposal three, that the funding be allocated to each of those, uh, areas by council, and then the committee come back to council and make recommendations? Or the committee just, um, allocate the funding to the, to the groups that they've determined? Is there any opportunity in that process for council to get involved in that decision?
Yes, um, so, one idea that we had is maybe the evaluation matrix. The idea is that the selection committee is doing what council sees as their vision and goals, and making sure that they're rewarding based on that. So, one good amendment might be to take the evaluation matrix back to council and get council approval of that evaluation matrix, and then the committee then allocates based on that.
And so, the evaluation matrix would include the budget, or just the, what they saw in terms of priority for the projects?
That's right. The, what they saw in terms of priority for the projects. So, it would be impossible to know what each project would need for funding, but you could look at what proportion of that budget that they would be eligible for.
Okay. I, I'd, I'd like to see something like that in the, in the bylaw, or in the policy, because I think it would be, it would be good for us to have, um, some, some idea of what was coming down from the committee as a, as a decision, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
So, will you be proposing that as an amendment, as part of the document? That's the process we're going through. So, committee of the whole process is that we make, if we have something that we want to change, it needs to be done by vote, and then those recommendations are handed over to council when it comes back to council, um, for, uh, decision. Oh, sorry. I'm gonna find someone to help you. Yeah, through vote.
I, I can't help with the wording question. I did want to speak, though, to generally, we are proposing here to move away from having the grants come to council for approval before they are fin, um, before they're distributed. And we have, we talked with council about this last year, because what we find often is that the committee, who council appoints, and a member of council is on the committee, does a lot of work to go through all the grants and allocate the funds, and then, when it comes to council, council redoes the work of that committee. And so, we've found that it's not particularly efficient, or always in the best use of our, the volunteers who sit on the committee. So, having clear direction from council about what the priorities are, and, and what we're generally looking to fund, and then allowing the committee to do the work, and then report back to council, is what's being proposed here, based on how this, um, grant process has gone in the last couple of years. And so, I think we had a conversation about it, I can't remember if it was at a strategic planning session, or after last year, recognizing that what we were doing wasn't working. So, we were actually moving away from having council approve all of it before, after the committee's done the work. So, what I hear you requesting, Counselor Sanford, is a move back towards what we have been doing, but we're trying to move away from.
Sorry, go, oh, I thought you were still, then you were asking, Counselor.
I think what I'm proposing is to find some middle ground, um, between the committee and council, and I think what Ms. Brown recommended, or suggested, is to look at a, a matrix that the committee has determined in a hierarchical way, uh, to determine which are the highest priority and lowest priority, and, and have some oversight at that point. I'm not saying to go back to the way it was, but I think I would like to see some opportunity in there for council to address. So, that remains my conundrum, is what is the appropriate wording for that motion?
Yes, so there's a, oh, that seemed loud. A couple of approaches. Um, Deputy Mayor McCollum is, is correct, that the committee of the whole procedure allows you to make amendments, so that, um, the committee of the whole is suggesting that these, um, these are amendments they would like to see, uh, to come forward when the policy comes back to council, and that allows you to debate that now. It doesn't have to be exact wording, it can be general direction, so, that the policy be amended to XYZ. And then, when we bring the policy back, we could, uh, have crafted that wording. So, I don't think it's important that you craft the actual wording for the policy now, just the intent that you would like to see in the policy. Unless, of course, you have, have the wording in mind that you know about.
And alternatively, if somebody, if a councilor wanted to create amendment, they didn't want to do it right now, they could wait until it comes back in March.
They could, but allowing administration to help craft that amendment is actually helpful. So, if we know the intent you're looking for, and if the rest of, uh, the committee of the whole agree with that intent, then we can help shape that amendment. Uh, that would be the best approach, yeah.
So, when that amendment comes back as recommendations from committee to council in March, and we see what that amendment looks like, if, uh, council at that time is not happy with it, or wants to make further amendments to that amendment, um, or say, now that we don't want to do that at all, that, that's an opportunity as well?
Correct.
All right, so there's lots of flexibility, then. Counselor Crowsert, hold on. Okay.
Thanks, just on that, um, do these, if we, if we approve something that's a change to the proposed bylaw, it doesn't need to come back to council as a, like, as a recommendation to vote on again? It could be just incorporated by administration right now into the policy that will be coming back? Yeah?
Correct, yeah.
Great, okay.
Okay. So... Gosh, this is a whole other full-time job. No, it's all right, I got it. I might as well learn it, so I can do it never again. So, are there any more questions for Ms. Brown? Okay. So... Then, if anybody has any changes they would like to recommend to be voted on for committee of the whole, uh, on this item, now would be the time? Counselor Crowsert.
Thank you, Deputy Worship. I have a couple of amendments, um, that I quickly jotted down when I realized what procedure we were following here today. So, uh, the first one has to do with Section 4.5E of the, uh, policy. And that is that, where it says the previous year's grant, that wording be changed to a previously provided grant, so that it's not just the, just not just the year prior, it might be two years elapsed, or three years since the previous grant. So, if they haven't followed the procedure in the past, that would obviously affect their eligibility. I have it written up. I think this is a very, uh, small change, but an important change, especially since a lot of the intent here is one-time, uh, funding, as opposed to year after year. It may be some time since, uh, the grant recipient has received funds, and so, I think it's appropriate that, uh, that they're judged on the previous time that they received, and not just the previous year.
Thank you. Absolutely. Question through the chair, from Counselor Sanford, to Counselor Crowsert.
Uh, thank you, Worship. Just a question for Counselor Crowsert through the chair. If there was a substantial change in the organization, and we were going to be going back in time, would that satisfy the changes that were made to the organization if grant funding had not, had been, had been essentially awarded to a previous organization that is now being carried forward with a completely different executive goal, et cetera? How would you see that impacting the go-forward?
I think anybody sitting on a, uh, an organization, sits as part of that organization, it does not change because the leadership changes. The actual whole section says, "The applicant has not met responsibilities of the, whatever it previously was." So, whatever the responsibilities were at the time, if they have not met them, then presumably, they would be ineligible. Uh, of course, I imagine that there would be some reasonableness applied to the application, and if they could, uh, if they could make good on whatever was lacking previously, that might, uh, put them back in good stead.
Should there be something, then, to indicate that? Because if we're going to be going back in, you know, an undefined amount of time, there could be some lapse, but that previous organization wouldn't have been able to follow the, the criteria of asking for an extension, because we're only applying it now?
This goes to eligibility, and it says, "Applications may not be considered eligible if," and so, there's obviously through the "may," some discretion applied, and "the applicant has not met responsibilities of," and I'm suggesting, "a previously provided grant." I think that's fairly simple. It's the entity that is responsible for, uh, meeting the obligations, and if that entity, whether it's last year, three years ago, or five years ago, uh, didn't meet their responsibilities, that's something that should be addressed by the committee before they consider whether or not that organization could receive another grant. I mean, they're either, uh, going to address that situation and make good, or they're going to provide some sort of an explanation, uh, as to why it cannot be done, and, you know, whatever it is. But I think that, all I'm asking is that it shouldn't just be limited to the previous year's grant, because that's, um, A, goes against the, uh, the very intent of these grants, is not to offer year-after-year funding, but it's, uh, it, it also recognizes that we're talking about, um, you know, this is part of the due diligence in, in your granting.
Did Ms. Brown have something she wanted to say on that?
Is it okay if I do? Absolutely, sorry.
It would be good to hear from her on that perspective.
I just wanted to, just give a quick comment, because we did wrestle over that, and, and the reason we said the previous years instead of, um, uh, previous grants, was because it's the enforcement of it. That's the part we struggle with, how it's difficult to, um, I know for sure, if last year, uh, outcome or report was submitted, um, but records are not consistent among administration in how they track the, um, their final reports, um, from many years ago. So, it's, it's just easier to be, um, they can't, we look for all final reports to be submitted, all final reports have to be submitted, and, um, if, for applications for the next year, we just look at the previous year.
Okay, well, the motion still stands. Does anybody have any other questions? Counselor Comfort, or comment, sorry?
Sorry, it was actually the "may" part that I was gonna address, that by putting "may" in there rather than "will," uh, it means that those, there's a bit of discretion that may be applied, so, I think that covers it. And to Ms. Brown's remark, sometimes those records, um, there may be anecdotal history in the community about what happened with a particular organization, but there's nothing documented, so, I guess, if, if there's documentation to say that they didn't meet their commission, could have been some kind of proof rather than hearsay, I'm okay with this, otherwise, I think I would stick with the original wording.
Okay, to the amendment. All in favor? Carried with Counselor, or opposed, sorry. Carried with Counselor Sanford in opposition. And the next...
Uh, yes, I just had a, an amendment that is trying to capture what Ms. Brown suggested about creating matrix of ranking that is presented to council in advance of the funding allocation. The policy be amended to include a matrix for council to consider the proposed ranking of projects to be funded prior to funding announcement?
So, and this is to the policy itself, an amendment that you'd like made? So, question to administration, uh, Dr. Cottle, you were saying earlier that you were, administration was trying to get away with bringing them to council for approval, but make it an administrative function? Would this matrix exist anyways? Oh, sorry?
Uh, yes, because it's part of the bylaw.
Right, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. So, uh, Counselor Sanford, is your intent that that would be a matrix? So, you want to change that, you would like the decisions to come back to council, then? Or do you just want to have the matrix provided, uh, as reference to council, uh, for a going forward?
Well, I think it would be, yeah, I think it would, I think it would still be good for us to know how projects were ranked, and what the full variety of projects was before the committee determined how the funding was allocated.
And so, is the intent for us to improve that, or just for information to council?
And I'm not sure how administration would present that, because that was a suggested, a suggested way to address that concern from Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown? So, what we could bring forward is just the evaluation matrix itself, without the projects attached to it. So, you could see how the committee will rank the projects. We wouldn't know the projects at that point, but what we could do in March, when we come back, is we can say, "This is the criteria we will use to rank, and people who are, who score higher will get a larger proportion of the, of the funding."
Okay, and then we wouldn't have to know what the funding values are, but just to understand what, how these projects ranked?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah, and I think, I think that would be a middle ground, that if administration can work with that, then that would be acceptable.
So, just so I understand, it would be that, it would come, like, it would be a blind matrix, that, that proponents would be, it would be applicant A, applicant B, applicant C, and we would see how that would be?
You wouldn't even see the applicants. You would just see that this is what the committee will use to rank things?
Okay.
Um, and it's just the criteria that they're using to rank things.
Okay, all right. And do you feel that that amendment gives you the, or that gives you the proper direction to do that? No? All right, I'm glad I asked the right question.
Yes, no, I, I think Ms. Brown and Counselor Sanford are talking about two very different things. What Ms. Brown is saying is that in March, when we come back with the policy and the bylaw, we'll show you the matrix that will be used to evaluate. But I believe Counselor Sanford is asking for is, upon each time that there's an award of grants, the evaluation of each of the applicants is brought to council for approval. And, uh, in accordance with what Dr. Cottle was saying, that was something that administration didn't support. So, if, if that, if I've captured Counselor Sanford's intent correctly, which is, you know, it says projects to be forwarded, or funded prior to funding announcement, that to me is very, uh, directive about bringing it each time there's, uh, funding going to be allocated, so that council has a final say on the applicants. And that is contrary to the recommendation of council, or of administration. However, it's council's prerogative to debate that idea, and if council wants that to ha, occur, then, um, we would amend that policy to show that when we bring it back in March.
Okay. Is that, is your intent being captured correctly?
Um, well, I, I, if, if the information is generic, it, it doesn't give us enough information to make any kind of recommendations or decisions. I would, I would, as Ms. DeSoto suggested, like to see which projects are being funded, and which ones are considered to be of highest ranking. That would be more valuable to me, uh, even if it wasn't a budgeted amount that was being recommended, so...
So, it's your, I just want to understand, because I don't, I don't think I'm understanding well, and that's what I was trying to draw... I don't, I don't think I'm understanding well, and that's what I was trying to draw out earlier. So you would like council to approve the grants before they are awarded or to confirm the approval of the subcommittee's granting recommendations before they are awarded?
Yes.
You want that?
And ranked, and ranking each
Okay, all right.
project, but not necessarily the, the funding value?
Okay, so that is clear and I think instead of debating this, I will call the question on this direction. Oh, sorry, whoa. Okay, all kinds of people showed up on my board. Manager two is not interested. CAO Shaw, Counselor Crowsert.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, with, with the clarification provided, I don't think that a, the matrix of the information is actually going to be something that's a necessary step. I'm happy with the committee making the decision within the parameters as set out in the policy of what type of funding streams are and what the areas they are to be funded. And I think that just getting a report back on what the decision was after the fact is, is fine by me, so I won't be able to support the amendment.
Counselor Russell?
Thank you, Worship. After the explanation from the CAO and Counselor Sanford, I think I, I support the intent of this amendment. It's incumbent on us, we're, with, without being disrespectful of the, the work of the committees, it's still incumbent on us, we're, we're dealing with public funds, let's just see what's there and if anyone has a fundamental objection, it can be voiced at that time. But just to pass it off and say, "Here you go," I, I don't think I like that idea. This makes me more comfortable.
Yeah, I think this, this amendment makes it muddy again and what I, I don't think I'll be able to support it for, for the reasons administration covered and where we've been in the past. What I, what I might rather lean to is if a counselor felt very strongly about being involved in the process, they could perhaps be the council rep on the committee.
And that would occur when we recommend or we appoint the subcommittee in March when this comes back? Counselor Comfort?
Yeah, I just had a question. I agree with Counselors Sealy and Crowsert. So this is, this policy and bylaw speaks to how we do it now as opposed to the way we did it before, and we're trying to get away from the way we did it before, which is to bring all of these grants to council. Is that correct? Okay, so I won't be able to support this amendment.
And I will not be able to support this amendment either, as being the one standing on the other side presenting on behalf of the subcommittee more than 13 years ago, I recollect the frustration in spending dozens of hours vetting applicants only to have our hard work overturned based on a word in a application. So this is a new way of doing it. I will be interested to see what amendments come forward when this is brought to council in March, if any of the criteria is tightened up perhaps. But at this point, I trust administration and I trust members of the public on this subcommittee to make important granting recommendations on behalf of their community. So based on that, I will call the question. All in favor of the amendment? Those opposed? Carried with Counselors Russell and Sanford in opposition or in favor? Defeated! God! This is so not my job. I wonder if John's watching right now. It's probably John. Any additional amendments? Counselor Crowsert?
Thank you. I'd like to propose an amendment that inserts a new section, just so you can turn to it, in section 5.3. I'm looking to insert one other item in between sections C and D. So the wording that I would like to insert is, and this goes to the administrators, administration's responsibility, is using discretion to approve application to extend the term of the grant. With regards to extensions, it's dealt with in two places, and this is very loud, isn't it? One, under 5.1A, it refers to that the funding must be within, spent within one calendar year unless an extension is officially granted, and that says "C" procedure. And the procedure talks about what one has to put in an application for an extension. I actually believe that we, we just need to be very clear that it is administration's responsibility to exercise that discretion, whether to grant extensions or not. And I think the best place to do it in the order of things is in between C and D, and so the following lettering would also change accordingly. I think that this makes it perfectly clear then that, that is council's policy, that we've set that it's one-year timeframe, but if there is an, an extension to be granted, it will be done by administration. And I think that that actually has to be stated in the policy instead of just left to "C" procedure. So I would ask you to support this amendment.
Where are you looking to insert this in the?
5.3. It's, it's insert a new section between section 5.3, C and D.
Oh, I read that first five, or S as a five, so we kept, okay, thank you.
That's an S. Sorry. I lose points for penmanship. Section, section 5.3, C and D, in between those two. And just in case you can't read it, it's to insert, "Using discretion to approve application to extend the term of the grant." And then that fits with what is stated above and the details provided in the procedure. I think this just gives, it's clear and it just reinforces what the intent is.
Thank you. To speak to the amendment, Counselor Comfort? I love an opportunity to get pedantic, Counselor. So would this not more properly belong up above where it talks about the term of the grant? So responsibilities, grant applicants must, A, spend the funding within one calendar year unless the extension is officially granted, and then insert it there, and administration shall use discretion to approve application to extend beyond term of the grant? And I bow to your superior pedanticness.
I think that, I think that it could work in either. I chose this spot because it was, it was the delineation of the various responsibilities and it's a responsibility of the administration. And so I would, I would insert it where I've indicated.
I'm not sure. Any additional questions to the amendment or comments? I'll call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. And any additional amendments to the policy, or the policy, rather? Okay, question, Counselor Comfort?
Through the chair of the clerk. Is this one of the policies that will come to the Policy Review Committee or have we already done it? I couldn't remember, I'm sorry. I don't think so.
No, I think that this policy would be approved, no.
Sorry?
Here we go. This policy would be approved by this council, so I think the intent would be it would come back in the next term of council for another review after it had been through this process. So no.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so through to the clerk, do I now call the question on the overall bylaw or? I didn't think so.
But if there were any further amendments to the bylaw, the procedure now would be the time, but, but the intent committee of the whole is to, to give just more of a general direction to administration so that when we come back to council, we're, we're providing you with something that you've already debated at a more informal level. So the actual approval of the policy and the bylaw would occur at the council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So I have a question for you, Ms. Brown. Is it the intent of the policy to be limited to nonprofits only or for nonprofits as well as community groups?
So it's because it's non-profit community organizations? And when I say community organizations, it's community organizations with a nonprofit intention that just haven't become an official nonprofit society, but not for, for profit.
So how would we make that delineation when we're looking at applications for, from organizations that are definitely a community group, but are able to derive some profit from the event that they're looking for support on?
We'd do it on a case-by-case basis and, and the event that they're looking for support on, predominantly that would be nonprofit. The case-by-case basis, so the rule of thumb is it's nonprofit, but for something like a community initiative, where it might be just a small community group that wants to do baskets for sick children or something like that, then that would be something that we would, we would consider eligible. But for the special events, it really is those unforeseen things when we say community organization, it's really meant for non-for-profit societies.
Okay, so in past, we've had, it has come under, we've, and it only encouraged nonprofits to apply. Can you remind me if, if there's a clause in here with regards to nonprofits that are already funded by another level or order of government?
That's right. So we cannot cover projects that are under the provincial or federal government mandate. That's still a criteria. And in the past, it was nonprofit, but we did allow community organizations as well.
Okay. I still have to spend some time deciding what I think about that before I bring it, if I decide to bring an amendment forward. So I will see you in March about that one maybe. All right, so any further amendments to this? Well, thank you very much, Ms. Brown. We appreciate your time. Okay, so we are item E1, February 2017, Counselor Updates. Look at that, no report from the mayor this month. So I'll just go through the list and see if anyone has any questions for Counselor Sealy. I actually have a question for Counselor Sealy. Counselor Sealy, do you, can you tell me when, if there will be a celebration at all or an opening to the public, for the public to be able to come in and take a look at MacArthur Place as we did when Coyote Ridge was opened?
I can, we have a committee meeting coming up and I can, I can ask.
That'd be great.
Yeah, sure.
Counselor Comfort? Yeah, I just wanted to make a note that for the, Through the Lens, the 20th anniversary, that's in fact the last year that Craig Richards will, the founder of that program, will be administering it. They're, he's retiring and they're moving out of town. So farewell and what an amazing job. He deserves some kind of a award or something. Okay, thank you. So no other questions for Counselor Sealy? Questions for Counselor Sanford? Questions? Oh, Counselor Comfort?
I don't have a question for myself, but I will take this opportunity while the press is held hostage to let everyone know that on the 22nd of April, Bo Valley Regional Housing The Lodge will be hosting a black tie bingo. Tickets are $85 and they go to help fund the FFNE that's required to furnish the lodge. We'll be having the event in the new dining room, which will not yet be inhabited by residents, although substantial completion of the building will be done at that time. So I encourage you all, if you have the time, to come on out and support, support our seniors. Shameless plug, shameless. Counselor Sanford?
Worship, I have a question for Counselor Comfort about her report on Wildsmart. Considering what we heard today from the subcommittee that's researching education for wildlife and conservation and wildlife quarters, can you give us an idea of where Wildsmart is going with some of their programming for education?
Counselor Comfort? The totter, who's TM in the report, is tasked with that and I could have provided that, there's a number of initiatives that that takes. They bring in speakers, there's a speaker series through the winter, consists of about three speakers, given at the high school, very well attended. There is the Wildlife and Wildsmart Ambassador Program where a group of volunteers go out and talk to people on trails. There are postings of signs out in the community for trail closures or explanations of why a trail is restricted. There's a whole raft of things and I'm happy to provide that to you, Counselor Sanford, if you'd like by email. Would that be helpful?
Yes, and so I just wanted to confirm that Wildsmart is, are undertaking a number of initiatives currently
Oh, yes.
in that regard and that they, it looks like they've got a new staff position that they're, they're adding to their?
Yes, there's a lot of work to do and they do need that additional staff member.
Okay, so they are doing education on wildlife quarters? Okay, thank you.
Not just for residents or visitors, but, but for both and throughout the seasons.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that since writing of this report, it has now been publicly announced that there's a new Rome transit route that will be starting this summer from Banff to Lake Minnewanka and back. This is something that obviously revenues will offset the cost and the remainder of the costs are 100% covered by Parks Canada. And the, the goal of this service was to obviously, in addition to providing transit to a, a well-known spot, it also allows the campgrounds and the areas for people to leave their cars at their campground and come into Banff. And there's also the potential of a small intercept lot being created that could be serviced by this, by this service, but that is still to be determined.
Thank you, Worship. I wanted to just make a comment under Counselor Comfort's report commending Counselor McCallum for her diligence and thorough research on behalf of the Personnel Committee for the CAO evaluations. And I was very happy that Counselor McCallum, Deputy Mayor McCallum, shared their learnings with, with myself for the Bo Valley Waste Management Commission because a lot of this information that gets worked up by one agency is often shared with another agency and it's very helpful for all of us to have the work that's done by somebody else. So thank you very much, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor McCallum, for sharing that with us and I commend you as well for all the work that you've done on that committee.
Thank you. It made my brain hurt after I was done. Our HR staff are very smart people and they helped me quite a bit. And one last shameless plug for transit, I noticed that
And one last shameless plug for transit, I noticed that the stats, and Counselor Crowsette highlights it in his report, that December stats showed us with 7,778 riders who were provided rides for free. And in January, we have 6,549 rides provided at cost. And so that's not a huge spread, which is exciting. So again, shameless plug. Any questions for Counselor Russell, Counselor Comfort?
Yeah, Counselor Russell, I just had a question on the Bow Valley Waste Management Commission. You have rebuild project ongoing, building frame starting to look like something. Which project is that, pardon my ignorance?
Absolutely not ignorance, this is the new, the new combined scale house and office building to replace the one that was firebombed about 18 months ago.
So that's, where is that located geographically?
Right on the main property, best way to describe it is on the main access road, slightly to the south of the current, what is the current weigh scale. It's all, it's all, there's a temporary trailer and a temporary scale trailer, and it's being consolidated into one nice new modern building that is going to knock everyone's socks off when they get the environmental ratings for it.
So is, that's at the Francis Cook landfill?
At the Francis Cook landfill.
God rest his soul, okay. Thank you.
Service area reports. So, how does John do this? Any questions on service area for the CAO's office? General Manager of Municipal Infrastructure. Oh, Counselor Russell?
Thank you, I'm relaying this question because someone asked me and they didn't have a clue. Capital Project 1624 Housing Need Study, is there, can you give me a status update on that, please?
I can. But go ahead.
So Capital Project 1624 encompasses a number of components. The housing need study was one aspect of that. And the progress on that was dependent upon working together with Bow Valley Regional Housing, who is taking the lead on this project. And the last I heard was they were still in the process of putting that together. So I actually, Counselor McCallum, if you have a better answer.
I'd be happy to comment on that. So part of the housing need study has been completed for the seniors component at this time. And we are now working, or sorry, the CAO is working on the RFP to send out for tender to have a consultant complete the final pieces of it in collaboration with CCHC. The expectation is that report will come back to the board by the end of Q2.
Terrific.
No, Q2. Yeah, so we ask for the RFP to be completed at end of Q1, with the report coming back by end of Q2.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, and Counselor Crowsette?
Thank you, I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, but under section A5, Financial Services, A, it speaks of assessments going out. And so I was just wanting to know if there was an update or what is the status with regards to our ARB appointments? I think the new MGA is, requires, or is going to require that you don't have a sitting counselor hearing that community's ARB. And I was wondering if there's any further discussion with regards to a regional approach or such as that. And so I was wondering if administration had any comments on that at this time? And if not, I'd love to receive an update.
Yes, we would have to provide an update at a further opportunity, although the MGA regulations around the ARB, I don't believe are in effect at this point in time. And it was the intent of Catherine Van Kympeema to bring a revised approach. It would require approval of council, et cetera, to move to a more regional makeup. And that is something we are working on with our municipal neighbors. So we'll bring a report to a future council meeting.
And thank you for that. And being on the ARB and having gone through the training and the renewed training, it's always emphasized that it's probably best to move along in that way. So I would really like it if, personally, I think it would be a very good move if we could make these arrangements prior to this coming fall, when, if there are going to be any ARB hearings, that's when they would be. So now is really the time to be making those changes so we don't miss out on another season, because it tends to cause, it's always an issue of some size.
Counselor Sealy?
Not on human resources, but the previous one, General Manager of Municipal Services?
Yes.
There's a new event that we're, the museum is considering taking on. It's going to be an Oktoberfest and a craft beer festival. And it looks like the event applications will be March 3rd, is that new, or is that?
Oh, I'm so close. Bueller, anyone? Thank you. Yes, so that is new. What we find happening, it depends on where the museum is, have, planning on hosting that, if it's something that the town would need to permit. They may, this may not be relevant to them if it's not.
I think it is.
Okay, so we are putting a call out, but this is a new process. And inevitably, there will be groups who have, are either planning a new event or, you know, they don't get the idea until past March 3rd. So March 3rd is not a hard cutoff. What we're trying to do is get a sense of how many people are planning events, when they're planning events for, and start to coordinate that a bit. What we're finding is there are more and more requests for events, and more and more people wanting the same date, sometimes the same field or the same space. And so that's making the permitting challenging. So we're trying to do a bit of event allocation by putting out this call. It will, it is new, and it is the first time we've done it. It doesn't mean that we won't take event applications past March 3rd, but it helps us, and it also helps event producers to secure their date and their location if they start to get information into us a bit earlier. What we're finding is there is a bit of event application creep. So there are some community groups that have had the same date or the space for a long time, and they don't think they need to get their application in. Or they're, you know, just assumed that it will be there, and in the meantime, other groups are coming in and asking for dates. So we're trying to get everybody to get their applications in early. That also helps us resource it from a staffing and other resource perspective. So that's a very long answer of saying, yes, it's new, and that the museum can still submit after March 3rd. But if they know that event is coming, it would be helpful if they started to communicate with us early about what they're thinking.
Yeah, maybe in expression of interest, I don't think they know all the details, but.
Totally fine, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sealy, questions on financial services? We've been through that, municipal services? Oh, Counselor, wow, all these people. Counselor Sanford.
There's so much to do.
It is. It's a harder job.
Yeah, Mayor makes it look pretty easy, doesn't he?
I know, he does, not bad for a little guy.
He has lots of experience, but you're doing a great job. I just had a question to follow up with, under that same question on the event date of March 3rd. How are the, how is the community being informed about that date and what the intent is? Because people get kind of used to deadlines and saying, oh, I missed the deadline, there's no point applying, you know? So how are we informing people about that?
So, great question, we are, we've started to advertise it. It'll be in all of our usual channels, on the website, and on social media, and in the newspaper. And then, of course, for events that we have longstanding relationships with, we have email contacts. So we are directly contacting groups. The harder thing will be groups like Counselor Sealy's example, new groups are new. So of course, we understand that they may or may not hear about it, and we'll, again, we'll continue to work with them. But, so we're trying to get the word out in every way we have to let people know that we're trying to start to streamline the process.
Counselor Crowsette, did you still have a question? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair to Administration on B1A, Community Social Development with regards to the Affordable Services Program. I think it's great that this is coming out. I just know that we've had one working session on this, and I was wondering if there's going to be a presentation to council? And is there anything that we need to approve? Or how does it work going forward as far as coming to council?
Yeah, so there won't, there wasn't going to be anything brought to council before it was launched. But once we launch it and start to have some data, we will do regular reporting to council. Yeah, at some point, once it's launched and we have some information, there'll likely be a presentation to council. And then it will, regular reporting will happen through the service area reports.
Okay, and when then can we find out what the program exactly entails?
Oh, sure, we can include that in the next COW report.
Or since it launches before, then are we able to get some information?
Sure, absolutely, yeah, I can have, I can have Ms. Brown send it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Comfort. I just had a question about the Parent Link Center's increase in participants by about 500, a little over 500, between 2015 and 2016. And I just was curious as to why the increase has been seen. So if you could provide that answer after the meeting, that's fine. I think it's suspect it has something to do with the new center and the extra space?
Yeah, I mean, we don't, the reality is we don't always know. Sometimes there's fluctuations in population or ages of kids in town, and we can't always attribute that. But largely, Parent Link believes that that is because of the new space, the new drop-in center.
Great success, great use of collaboration between community groups there.
Yeah.
Just cleared the board because I had no idea who was next. Just like, start over. So I'm going to ask a question about the Parent Link Center moving into 209. How many days a week is that happening? And is there a way that counselors can get that out in the community radar outside of the FCSS stream?
Yeah, so it's just happening one day a week, and we can absolutely send you the details of when that's happening so that you can promote it.
That's great, like, this is a great addition to their programming.
Yeah, it's a good partnership between recreation and community social development.
Perfect, thank you very much. And I would add to Counselor Crowsette, that was actually on my list of asking about the Affordable Services Program. I look forward to seeing more information about it, this is also very exciting. Office. No, I just cleared. On. You don't want to hear what I have to say anyways. Municipal Clerk's Office, any questions? Protective Services, Planning and Development, Engineering Servi, oh, Counselor Sanford, got that one right.
Thank you, Worship. Engineering, that's what I'm on. I didn't even let you say the whole word.
Engineering Services.
I had a question about the GIS access to these maps. How would people get, how would people find these on the website? Because there's quite a bit of information available, so how do we find it?
Just going to hit, keep hitting them until someone answers, there we go.
So we had done advertisement on the, in the local papers and on the web. So through our various channels, we've been promoting the fact that the, this new open data source is available. And there are links to it on the website. So if you just, if you go into the Planning and Development section, there is a big link there as well. So we're doing our best to promote it and make it easily findable.
Okay, so it's under Planning and Development? That's where we find the sublinks to all these?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, Engineering Services. Facilities. Parks. Streets and Roads. Solid Waste Services. Utilities. The Wapiti Campground. Okay, and then we will look at the Council Resolution Action List as of February 3rd. Any questions? Counselor Crowsette?
Thank you. First of all, my thanks for the list being updated, it's really appreciated. And because it was updated, I get to see that a couple of the tourist accommodation options are really significant. They're significant, significant, so. But thank you, but my main point, but my main point was, thank you for updating that, that's really helpful.
Any other questions on the Council Resolution Action List? And finally, we have, no, what, oh, sorry, I thought that was.
It's okay. I actually just have an update on item 312017, which is about the radios that Mr. Burt was here recently to present on. I do have a verbal update. So he has checked with Harris, who's our radio supplier, and with Trident Communications, which is who the town of Banff has used to get their dual-band radios. And neither of these companies offers a rental or leasing option for dual-band radios. So Mr. Burt is wondering if this is sufficient for being able to move ahead? They'd like to purchase the radios so that, thank you, so that they get them? Or would council like some more formal reporting back on that?
Anyone? It looks like everyone's fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing that back to us. Okay, and then finally, we have the council, nope, Boards and Committee Updates, the BBRH Monthly Bulletin, as well as the Bow River Lodge Update. Any questions on that? All right, well, then a motion to adjourn. Those in favor, carried unanimously. Thank you for being gracious, everybody.